Okay, today is Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Call the meeting order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Fechter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Petry?
Here.
Trustee Prakno?
Here.
Everybody is here tonight, which is good. We now move on to, we're gonna do Pledge of Allegiance, but first, we're gonna do the invocation. We have pasted oath parties from the Lutheran Church of the Holy Spirit. Past you if you would please. Be nice to him, it's his first time.
I decided to start with a little joke, is that okay? I heard at the interfaith meeting that the mayor really enjoyed having the Lord's Prayer done, and they were joking about it, saying like, he almost shouted out a good old Southern Baptist amen. So I thought, I almost tonight thought, if I did it in Latin or German, he'd jump up and shout, "Hallelujah," so would that be true? But I'm not doing that tonight, but I will be back, so we may test that out in the future.
Okay.
But tonight, I just want to open, Martin Luther did love the Lord's Prayer, so I'm gonna start with just the first petition, but then also read some scriptures based on the Old Testament today as part of our prayers. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Well, Lord Jesus, we pray tonight that you would guide our prayers, that you would prepare our hearts to stand under all that happens in heaven. And Lord, as we look to your scripture, help us to pay attention to everything that you have said, that we listen closely to your words, for they are life to those who find them, and they are health to a man's whole body. Above all else, we should guard our heart, for it is a wellspring of life. Help us to seek, to pursue what is right, what is good, for love finds life, and prosperity finds honor. Lord, help us to walk with the wise, help us to choose a path that gives honor to others, as one that walks with the wise also grows with the wise. Those that choose bad company also choose to live with those that have corrupt character. Lord, we pray for those that are especially going to be in service to the village, that you would guide them, as you would guide anyone in any office, that they would seek to do what is right, they would ask for wisdom, and to search out ways that will bring good things to others, that you would guide hearts to rule justly, that you would help those hearts to look into what would be best for others, especially be mindful of the poor or the hurting, that everything would be done in fairness and good measure, and that the throne of God would be honored in all decisions that are made. We pray, Lord, that you would guide our character, that it would serve well, that we be one that is known as one that serves others, and that you would help us to be one that speaks up for those who cannot speak for themselves, but to do what is right by our office, to give glory and honor to God, and to give love and help to those that are in need. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you see the pastor, hang on a second. You know, it's ironic, you brought up Southern Baptists, my mama's family's from the South. So, spent many summers at long, long, long Southern Baptist church meetings on Sunday, and the only saving grace was, they always had a great lunch afterwards. So we got through it. We always give out some of our chocolate logos, after the thing here, and the dark chocolate, so they're healthy. My heart surgeon said it's okay to take it. I thank you, I get to welcome, I know you've been here for a while, but I do welcome your community, and I appreciate being here tonight. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Take care. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of February 12, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second, we have motion by Trustee Petry, a second by Trustee Zarnik, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you now, so approval. Move on to the board of trustees report tonight, we'll go pretty quickly here, so we can get on to our swearing ins, 'cause we got a lot of young ones here tonight, just a couple quick items. We're excited to announce that Dollar Tree is coming to the Mallard Crossing Shopping Center, that's the one located on Meacham Road. Dollar Tree is filling up the last space, that's by Ross Dressforless and the new Aldi store, so that shopping center's pretty much full now. We got the new McDowns that opened up right in front of it, it's doing very well. We talked about before, went to the ribbon cutting at Planet Fitness, talking to the owner there, they're very close, getting very close to fill up the rest of their space. So, all the vacant stores, a lot of the vacant stores we have in Village are filling up now, and we're very excited about that. This Village has worked very hard, I know Josh works very hard in the Economic Development Office, Ray and his staff, and working hard to make sure we get these filled up quickly, and in this kind of environment, with more or less places losing stores, we're excited to see stores come to Elk Grove. So, we'll continue to work hard on that, but we're gonna welcome Dollar Tree here very soon. I know we've had a very unusual winter, it's like a welcome gift to Kobe, our new Public Works Director, I don't think we've ever seen so much ice in years, and then, it's like, snow never stops, and the cold, here almost March, and it's gonna stay on for quite a while, they say, so, doing a good job. I know some people have told me that mayor, that my plow guy seems to be doing different. We've had, three of our normal plow guys that do a lot of plowing in the Village have had some injuries, and they're not plowing right now, so we have new guys, or guys doing different areas than they usually do, so I tell everybody, be patient, these guys are new to your street, how they did it, everyone plows a little bit different, they all plow good, but everyone does a little different nuances when they do it, so, be patient, of all years, to have this kind of year, some newer guys doing the streets, they're, we're trying to get a hang of it, so Kobe, I know you guys are working hard, they still keep working almost every Sunday, it seems like, it just keeps on going, but they're doing a good job, but that's why you may see a little different way, they may do your street a little later than usual, 'cause they start in a different area, then the other guy start, and all that, but I'll just let you know, we do keep track, every one of our plow trucks have a GPS on it, so we know what streets they're doing, what time they're doing it, so we know everything being done, how often, all that, we stay on top of that, so, we're getting there, so, tell the guys, hang in there, we appreciate all the hard work they're doing. Those that are here, talk about the Bahamas Bowl, we'll be making that announcement under the regular agenda, that won't come under the mayor's report tonight. Next thing I'd like to talk about is, I gotta give the Park District credit, I don't know if anybody saw the last catalog they put out, they just put out, delivered to all the homes in a plastic bag and all this. I actually, I must be getting bored in my old age, I looked at it, I cannot believe the amount of programs our Park District puts on here in the Village, it is phenomenal. I give them so much credit, I wish I had, I don't think it was that much when my kids were little, you know, 30 years ago, but I give that Park District a lot of credit and kudos. I mean, if you can't find something to do through that Park District, whether you're two years old, or 102 years old, then you're not looking right, because I could not believe what they had in there, it is truly unbelievable, so, I give the Park District credit, I mean, it's impressive what they've got going on.
And the library sent out-
The what?
The library sent out their winter programming too, and again, offering trips, movies-
Unbelievable.
-activities for the kids, it's, we're a great community.
And most, a lot of the stuff is free.
Yeah.
That's what's nice, so, give them credit. With that done, tonight we have swearing ins for the Police Department and the Fire Department, so, let me see, Fire Department with the little ones? That's what I thought. We'll start with the Fire Department tonight then. I heard a little crying, so I thought, is you Mr. Nekabaka?
I'm trying-
Then I realized it was twins.
I'm trying-
It was close though, it was close.
I'm trying to grow up.
Didn't last long, did it?
No.
So, Chief Michael, it's all yours?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and once again-
We thank the board and Mayor Johnson for, for working with us to bring our staffing up back to our fully authorized levels in the Fire Department, we appreciate that very much. Having the number of people we need to do the job is a critical part of how we are able to be successful with what we do, so we appreciate that. Not only the support from the mayor and the Village Board, but also from the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, who continue to bring forth good quality candidates into our ranks, and we appreciate that very much. So tonight, we're gonna, the mayor's gonna administer the oath of office to two new firefighter paramedics. First will be Wojcik Simic, otherwise known as Max, and secondly will be George Trunick. So if the two of you would please come up, that would be great. Max, Max was born in Poland, and he moved to the United States at the age of nine with his parents and his sister. He resided in Burbank and attended Rebus High School. Through the high school and through the City of Burbank Fire Department, he was selected to take part in a two-year fire cadet program, and earned his firefighter two and EMT certificates upon graduating high school. After completing high school, he went to paramedic school at Advocate Christ Medical Center down in Oaklawn. He was hired part-time at the Roberts Park Fire Department in 2015, and full-time in January 2018. He currently resides in Romeoville with his girlfriend. So to firefighter Wojcik Simic, we say, gratulati e profitane, or, congratulations and welcome. George Trunick, in 2010, George graduated from Western Illinois University with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration. Western is also where he met his wife, Lisa. He worked in the supply chain management for five years, and three of those were for Fortune 500 Company. After becoming a paramedic in 2016, he was hired as a part-time firefighter with the Hanover Park Fire Department, and completed his basic level firefighter training at the Romeoville Fire Academy. In the fall of 2017, he began teaching as a paramedic, began teaching paramedic students as an adjunct instructor at St. Francis Hospital in Evanston. In 2018, George and his wife welcomed twins Nolan and Elena into their family, and he wanted to make sure that I told you all that it's way past your bedtime, so if they're a little bit cranky, we ask you to bear with us. George seeks to become a part of the dive team for the Fire Department and work in public education, teaching CPR, first aid, and safety measures to prevent fire injuries in the home and workplace, and we also welcome firefighter/paramedic George Trunick. Thank you, Mayor.
Pass. So George, is that why you cry at night when Pastor bedtime will appear, is that a-
Maybe.
Okay. Why don't you come up first? Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Boy Chuck Simic.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Having been appointed to position of-
Firefighter?
Firefighter.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge-
And I'll faithfully discharge-
The duties of the office of-
And the duties of the office of-
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Point out, your family, anybody out here?
Yes, I'm here with my girlfriend Julia.
Raise your hand, there she is.
My parents, and also my girlfriend's parents.
Good to see you folks, thank you for being here. Now, Romeoville, huh?
Yep.
Sox fan?
Yes.
No, we, 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 we welcome people, yeah, we like diversity in this Village, so now, so you're a Sox fan, I think there might be one more, is there? No, they moved out of town?
Yeah.
Well, we have one Sox fan, welcome, keep living in Romeoville, if you're a Sox fan. Tell a bit about yourself, you know, what made you want to become a fireman, or anything, or?
Having the opportunity to join the cadet program in high school, I thought it was just a cool concept, you know, leaving high school early and heading over to the Fire Department to learn the profession, and I was hooked, and here we are.
You're at the best department right now, I don't care what says, Elk Grove's the best by far, and we're glad you're part of it.
I believe it.
We need some nice chocolate logos for all the parents and in-laws, or girlfriends' parents, I apologize. Am I jumping the gun on that one?
Ah, yeah, a little bit.
By the way, he gets paid well in Elk Grove, he can afford a ring, so don't worry about that. That's for you?
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Western Illinois, Georgie.
Glad to meet you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Playing sports?
I did just cross-country.
That's okay. Playing sports?
Kind of sport, tennis.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, George Trunick.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of-
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge-
And I'll faithfully discharge-
The duties of the office of-
The duties of the office of-
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, my friend. Anybody out yet?
On the front row there is my dad with the camera, that's my cousin-in-law, Ken, who was able to come over from Schaumburg just for a little bit, those are his three kids.
No.
We're the best.
Schaumburg is Elk Grove's favorite suburb, so we love having you here, make sure you tell Mary Larson we said hi, and we're glad you're here, and you can learn, you know, they can learn a lot working with you, so-
I agree.
They'll probably attach on you a lot, find out what goes on in Elk Grove, they'll bring you back to Schaumburg, we'll just wait, it's fine, there's no problem, don't worry.
Behind him is my cousin Christie and her dad, which is my uncle Jeff, behind my cousin Christie is my wife Lisa, thank you for all your support over the years, I wouldn't be here without you. And then behind her is actually my brother-in-law Ricky, and then in the back you'll see my twins Nolan and Elena, four months old, with their mother-in-law Linda, and father-in-law Pat. Thank you, everybody.
Does that George get? Oh, no.
So I said-
Okay, well, before you, well, first off, Western Illinois, you're good, Business Administration, what made you flip from Business Administration to firefighting?
I just, I've always wanted to do this, and I just thought it would be a good, like, I guess, support, you know, in case something happened on the job or whatnot, something to fall back on, so.
Good for you, well, we're glad you chose being a fireman, and glad you chose Elk Grove Village.
Thank you.
So before you go, there's a lot out there, so, Lloyd, we have, oh, good, you got one. All the family members there, give it all that, we wish you well, and a long career here in Elk Grove.
Thank you, sir.
God bless, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, we have four police officers being sworn in tonight, guys, if you want to come down. Board and mayor, thank you very much for allowing us to hire these four, they spent 14 weeks at the Police Academy, and one week was wrestling. I don't, I don't believe they do that in the Fire Academy, but we do it in the Police Academy.
We do have a state champion somewhere.
Yes, we have a future chief, I believe.
There is a chief, isn't there?
Yeah, you're right, sir. So, our four officers, the first one is Kevin Speicher, did I say it right?
Yeah.
All right, I've been practicing that one. Kevin comes from Bloomingdale, Illinois, still single? Well, that's, still single, you know, that's good. Bachelor's-
He's been paid enough to buy rings too, so-
Yeah, there you go. Bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of Iowa?
George, that's easy, Iowa?
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Kevin is a track star, if you didn't know that. He, yes. So, he will run to trouble as a way, away from it, so he's gonna be one of our good guys, so, again, he spent 14 weeks in the Police Academy, another 14 weeks in training, and he's in, should be hitting the streets by himself shortly, so.
Kevin, step on up, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Speicher.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the county of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge-
And I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of the office of-
The duties of the office of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody out here tonight, or?
I do, I have my girlfriend who's out here tonight, my family who wishes they could be here, couldn't, they're on a plane, and they'll miss it by a couple hours, but-
Okay, where's your girlfriend, she didn't raise her?
She's right here, she's a little short.
Oh, she's filming, yeah, but she's filming, that's good. You're gonna be famous now, now you realize what's going on right now, don't you? You are on TV. First time on TV?
Uh, not the first time, no.
You've been on TV, were you a TV star?
No.
Okay, what were you on TV for?
Uh, for track, we were on the Big Ten Network for a little bit.
Really?
Yeah.
So at Iowa, you were, what, what distance did you run?
I was a high jumper, I'm not the best runner, unfortunately.
Oh, no, high jump, how high?
Seven, two and a half.
So think about it, a normal door is six foot eight, so you could jump over a door.
Yes.
That's impressive, George, impressive, isn't it?
Back when I was in shape.
Very.
I know you run door, George, or door fast, George.
I am, as quick as I can.
Jumping over is even better, that's impressive, I was impressed with that. Now, it would really be impressive if they didn't put that big mat you landed on, and the old days, they landed in a sandpit.
Mm-hmm.
That would've been impressive.
That would've been difficult.
Scary too.
Very.
I'm making sure you get some chocolate for you, don't worry. So, bring it out, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our next officer is Daniel Lim, grew up in Morton Grove, he's also single, liberal arts, Oakton Community College.
Georgia, Oakton Community College.
Owls.
Is he right? Owls, mascot for Oakton? I believe it is.
I believe so.
Yeah, it is. It's the Owls.
Uncle Brian?
No, no.
Chocolates. Daniel also worked for ABT Electronics and their asset protection team before working us, he's also a sergeant in the US Army Reserves, so, welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service there too, thank you. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Daniel Lim.
Been appointed to the position of?
Been appointed to the position of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge-
I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of-
The duties of office of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
And who do you, do you have anybody here tonight?
Yes, my parents in the back row there.
Okay, so, okay, so, what made you choose, well, first off, any sports?
I love basketball.
Basketball. Is that a winter sport?
Yes.
I think I saw that on, I think ESPN's Ocho, once they showed fringe sports, I saw basketball during that, that's a fringe sport, so.
Yeah, and pinballs.
Okay, what made you choose to become a police officer?
With, similar to the military, where you're going out serving the country, but now, I'm serving locally here, so, that's pretty much why I wanted to be a police officer.
We appreciate it, and you're in the, like I said, best fire department, best police department, bar none, well, Schaumburg's gone now, see, he, he realized it too, so he left. So, he actually applied for a job in Elk Grove now, when he walked, I saw that. Well, you picked a good department, I got some chocolates for your parents and you.
Thank you.
We wish you well, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next officer is Daniel Lea? Lea, okay, Daniel Lea, Daniel comes from us, from Chicago, bachelor's degree in criminal justice studies, Northeastern Illinois University.
Ooh, alumni, Northeastern Illinois University, 1982, you know what they are?
I think it's the same as the Naples High School in Florida, Golden Eagles?
Very good, now you realize, Northeastern, mine went to school there, was Division One basketball team, they came within one win, are going to the NCAA tournament one time, and I was impressed, and they didn't keep it much longer after that, but, it was a good school, so, go ahead. You know what it was before, it's called Northeastern Illinois University?
It was a teachers' college.
Chicago Teachers College, that's why I went, I was a teacher, so that's why I went there.
So, prior to working here for Elk Grove Village, Daniel worked for the Transportation Security Administration, TSA, and before that, he worked for Cook County Sheriff's Office and the county jail, correct? Good, and plays a saxophone, speaks, reads, and writes Polish, I've been told, so, very good, Daniel, welcome.
So, you worked for Cook County Jail, so that's why you came in, you said hi to George right away, huh? Hey, George, okay, come on up.
Old friends.
Raise your right, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Daniel Lea.
Been appointed to the position of?
Been appointed to the position of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge-
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of-
The duties of the office of-
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What are you having tonight?
My beautiful girlfriend Angelino.
Okay, just her?
Yep.
That's good, that's all you need.
That's all I want.
Now, like I said earlier, policemen get paid more than enough to buy those nice rings, but anyway, what made you, any sports first?
I played a little bit of football in college, basketball in grade school.
Football, we love, football is a great warm-up for the real sport of wrestling, so, we love that every fall. And what made you want to become policeman?
Had a little bit of a rough childhood growing up, so, always wanted to help kids that need guidance, so, just being able to respond to domestic calls, and being able
So, just being able to respond to domestic calls and being able to take a few minutes to talk to kids and give them some guidance and words of encouragement? That's why.
Good for you, God bless for that. That's great. Can you help older people, too?
Yeah, sure.
Here's some chocolates for you. First off, congratulations and good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Last but least, we have Colton Gerald's from Bartlett. His college is Elgin Community College with a criminal justice degree.
Elgin?
I think it's the same as Michigan State, isn't it? Spartans? I have a book now, college nicknames.
You're studying. Are you serious? You do. Did you give them the name of schools?
Am I under oath?
Oh. Oh, my God. You're cheating.
It's not cheating, I call it studying.
It's preparing.
You are so impressed. Okay.
Were we having dinner?
This, I have witnesses. Is there a cheater? You owe me dinner at Chicago Pride Steakhouse.
That's fair.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'd like real pains coming in next week.
Who? Oh, that's the Owls.
Very good. Colton, again, is from Bartlett. Worked as a security supervisor for Northwestern Memorial Hospital. In high school, he played baseball and basketball, and I believe your baseball team won a state championship, if I don't, if I remember. So, again, Colton Gerald's.
And we got a state champion wrestler and a state champion in baseball? Congratulations, come on up, Colton, way to go. What position?
I'll field pitcher, didn't matter. I was left-handed, so I couldn't play certain positions.
First base, right?
Yeah.
No, third base you can't play, right? Third base, left-handed?
Or shortstop, or second base.
Why should I ask you? You're gonna lie about it anyway, so. Okay, raise your hand.
That hurts.
I state your name.
I, Colton Gerald.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Elk Grove Village?
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage?
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States?
I would support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
Duties of the office of?
Police officer?
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Someone here?
My girlfriend and her family, so the red sweater and then down the line. That's her two sisters and then the blonde hair is my girlfriend.
Good to meet you. Well, what made you pick, of all things, a police officer?
I've always wanted to be a police officer, similar to Lea. I had a rough upcoming, and my life experiences inspired me to want to be a police officer at a young age.
That's great. I think that's great. First off, I think it's great you guys willing to commit your time, as all these guys have over the years. Will enlist themselves on behalf of other people. That's very commendable. And that's why we're very proud of the people here. You've joined a great force here, all of you are. This is a phenomenal department. The board appreciates, the community appreciates you. In Elk Grove, we thank the men and women in blue, and that's why we're always gonna keep it that way. So we thank you all, and I congratulate you.
Thank you.
Got some chocolates for you, you got quite a few out there, so we'll give you enough. You'll be set to go.
Thank you.
And congratulations. Take care. Folks, if you want to go ahead and get going, and we've got little ones, all the rest. We thank you for being here, thank all the guys for showing up tonight. Burt, thank you for being here. Again, congratulations. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Are you leaving tomorrow?
Yeah.
Cheater. Cheater.
Where's my dinner?
My God.
Winter winner chicken dinner.
I was so impressed, the Owls. I would've guessed that if you'd paid me a million.
Oakton Owls. We all knew that.
So the question is, what else have you?
My God.
Thank you, Nancy, thank you very much.
Are you a lawyer, too? Well, wait a second before I get going. Hey, he helped you.
That's exactly right.
Was Chief Make, Michael, in on it, too?
No, I.
I saw him sneak out, I'll maybe use that. I was so impressed.
As you well, you should be. You're gonna miss me.
Oh, God. I'm glad I got that surface air missile for tomorrow morning. Okay, we're going to get started. That concludes the mayor's report. Move on to trustee's report, trustee Prochnow.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Lady in red.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Helen Leskey, Leskey, right? For inviting us to the Hatendorf Center this morning to talk to the seniors about, the board members were invited to come and have a coffee with them and a discussion about what we do for the community and answer their questions. And it was a very nice exchange, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk with our residents, especially our seniors. And I'm sure everyone else that was there will mention it, so I'll just say thank you very much. And then I'd like to talk about Sister City. We are sending off another set of exchange students to Taramana and Maresa in Sicily as part of our exchange program with the Sister City. This will be our tenth trip, I believe, ninth trip. Thank you, thank you, Steve. Our ninth trip for the exchange, and they've already had the students here from Taramana over the Thanksgiving holiday, and they will be going the last week of March. So, excitement is building. I'm sure it's gonna be a wonderful learning experience for all of them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Prochnow. Trustee Feiter.
Okay, yeah, I want to thank Helen also. We had a real good time today. I think the most common complaint that we had, we had a lot of questions, but the biggest complaint was something we really can't control, but it was about the post office here in Elk Grove. The people really are having a lot of problems. And I, we hear this all the time, we've heard it the last few years, but it's a shame. The only thing we can really tell people to do is contact the congressman. That's, he's the one that's got the power to do something about it. Some other things, we had our carnival of character this Saturday, past Saturday, and had many, many groups represented there. I saw trustee Prochnow working with the Boeing game with?
Bocce ball.
Bocce ball?
Thank you.
Yeah. And with Steve Schmidt and others working on that during the event. And there was bicycle groups, churches, Boy Scouts there, VFW was there, just so many to mention. And we had over a thousand people. It was a terrific turnout. The last person to get a hot dog at the place, and it was near the very end, was Tom Robb. He waited until the very end, but I hope it was still warm. It was okay, good. So it was very successful. Meet Chicago Northwest has its annual Restaurant Week going on right now. And what they do is, this time of the year, restaurants are really hurting. And I understand from our meeting that right now, the restaurants are going through a very especially bad winter with people not coming out because of the bad weather. I mean, this is always kind of a dead time for them. So we have a thing called Restaurant Week, which we promote. Forty-five restaurants in the northwest suburban area are participating in it. If you go into these restaurants and they are participating, they've got special menus for both lunch and dinner that are part of this, and you get a real good deal out of it. And in Elk Grove, we have five restaurants that are part of this Restaurant Week. Tell Papa, Sweet Baby Ray's, Real Time, Jimmy's, Char House, and the W Bar at Wyndham. These five are all participating in Restaurant Week in Elk Grove. So if you can give them a try, it would really help those restaurants. Pardon? Do you have a question? Oh, okay. Okay. And Bulgaria, everybody, I think probably remembers that I went with the chief, or police chief Chuck Walsh, to Bulgaria. We are gonna do a presentation on, to kind of show you what it was like on that trip. And the very special festival, we attended while we were there. And we'll be doing that at an upcoming meeting. We'll have that presentation and be able to show you some pictures and things like that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Trustee Zarnik.
Good day, mates. I couldn't make the affair this morning because I was returning from Australia and New Zealand, and it was a really wonderful trip. I just want to also remind everybody, we have the Zarnik Scholarship applications out now. We have six one-thousand-dollar scholarships for students from residing, or from Elk Grove Village to help with their future education, whether it be college or business. So, the applications are online. Pick one up. It's not only on Elk Grove line, but zarnikgolf.com also has it on their website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Trustee Petri.
No real report, but I was at the Hatendorf Center also this morning, talking with the seniors, which was very interesting. Also, I'd like to thank Colby and his guys for the snow plowing. And I thought that was bad, until yesterday, I went by the place on Tawney Road and saw them doing a sewer. And I could only see their heads, they were in the ground. I thought, that's cold, that's earning their money. So, I just thank those guys for their perseverance and their fortitude. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Petri. Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also at the Sheila Ray Center, and I want to thank Helen and Bob. It was a very, very interesting event. What made it more interesting for me, however, is I had a day like you, Mr. Mayor. I had the seniors in the morning and a board meeting at night, and my village email was broke. So I had to do the whole day without email. So now I know what you're going through. It's gotta be a tough, tough life.
You'd be amazed how you can survive without email.
But I would like to thank Ed May, Merrick Bajor, I believe, and Mike Radliff. They helped me through the problem this afternoon, and now everything's working fine. So, there, we have some real bright people up in our information technology department. And the only other thing is, tomorrow night is the Joint Action Water Agency meeting. And it's mainly talking about the 2020 fiscal year budget. But what's making it probably a little sad in a way is Mayor Larson, who's been chairing that committee for a long time. This will be his last one because he's not running for reelection this year. So, that concludes my report.
I've always chaired it for the twenty-two years I've been there, so. Another question could be, will they move the meetings to a?
Well, we'll try.
Hopefully here, where John was located.
Yeah, yeah. And I mentioned one other thing also, before I forget. Trustee Feiter mentioned the carnival of exceptional character. And I got there, and it was, it was very gloomy out in the parking lot. It was raining off and on, and he's right about the thousand people, because I had to park pretty far away. But when I walked inside, these kids were just having the greatest time of all. It made it like a bright sunny day outside. So, you and the rest of the CCC people did a great job, Pat, so.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Last, but definitely not least, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flaky.
Is this where we blew it out of the Bahamas Bowl?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. Just let me know. I did not make the senior center today, I'm sorry, I had to work, but I appreciate the invitation. Hopefully, I can do it in the future. Because I'm sure people said some very nice things about me. As usual. So, thank you again for the invitation. And that's all I have, just let wake me when it was the hummer bowl.
Okay. Move on now to the accounts payable warrant for February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I move that we pay bills of the accounts payable warrant for February twenty-sixth, an amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Pardon?
Did you say ninety-eight or ninety-three?
I thought you said ninety-three.
Oh, okay. Second.
Good, okay, we have motion. Second. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Hi.
Trustee Listener.
Hi.
Trustee Petri.
Hi.
Trustee Prochnow.
Hi.
Trustee Zarnik.
Hi.
Motion passes six to nothing. Move on now to the considered agenda tonight. We have items A as in apple through K, the spring's coming as in kite. Can I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie. Any questions, comments, concerns from any staff members or board members tonight, considered agenda? Anybody in the audience sign the considered agenda? Seeing none and hearing no objection, record the vote as please demonstrated, six to nothing. The first item under the regular agenda, Mr. Knickerbocker, I take it we will continue?
Yes, I believe we should probably put it under unfinished business, item number twenty-six, because I don't have a specific date where the board will be able to engage in that.
Okay. Does that leave it available for action?
It does leave it available for action, because it'll be on the agenda.
On the agenda, so we could, when time comes forward, we can take action at that point.
Correct.
Okay. So, without board's objection, we'll keep that under unfinished business, item number twenty-six.
Correct.
Okay? And then item B, the makers wanted Bahamas Bowl. This is our, time that the board would need to decide if we're gonna exercise our option for the second year. Is a three-hundred-thousand-dollar option, the same price as the first year. And it would follow the same suit of what we did last year, as far as the game goes and all that. Again, we're excited about the opportunity to potentially do it again. We make no preconceived beliefs that we're gonna get the same kind of coverage we got last year. We know that's not gonna happen. But we also know that doesn't happen hardly at all in the world of advertising. So, we are optimistic, we can continue to get good return for the village. We're also hopeful that it continues to keep our name out there. The one thing people need to understand and remember, we're trying to continue to build, Elk Grove is a brand name in the eyes of the business world. Not locally, that we've done a great job over the past years on. This is our first foray into national exposure. And like you said before, obviously, the first year was beyond belief. We want to continue to build upon that. We're gonna continue to build on name recognition, branding recognition. As I said before, someday, we hope some guy sitting in California, a large manufacturer looking to locate the Midwest, whose relative brings up Elk Grove, for some reason his head, he goes, Elk Grove, I've heard of that place, yeah, let's check it out. We want to make sure we're identified as a place to do business, as a place to come to. And I know everyone's read the stories about the restaurant owner in Indianapolis looking to expand, he's considering Elk Grove, where he said, straight up, he saw the game, thought it was, town's innovative to do it, he wants to check it out. Whether he comes or not, we won't know for some time. The gentleman out of Texas with his manufacturing company, he's talked to us several times. He said he's very serious about looking at Elk Grove, potentially coming here, but even said right up front, this is not something I do tomorrow, it may take six months to a year to put this thing to fruition. Same thing for the company in New York and others. It doesn't happen overnight. We wish it did, but it's not that kind of thing. But to have people talking about Elk Grove, have people looking at Elk Grove, that was not happening to the scale by any means before the Bahamas Bowl, especially nationally. We do advertise a lot on local news channels during especially election cycle, we'll continue to do that. But that's a regional approach, northern Illinois, southern Wisconsin, eastern Iowa, northwestern Indiana. This is national. The number of hits from Florida, California, throughout the country, Texas, New York. That's exactly what our vision was when we started this. And we're hoping to see it continue into next year, if we vote tonight to do it. That's the whole concept behind this. So I know folks are saying, hey, what, can you show me what opened up? We can't right now. When it does, we'll be the first to let you know. But again, we're name-brand, ID'ing Elk Grove throughout the world, not just the country, as we found out from papers in India, to ESPN in Berlin, Germany, to all of this country. So, if we do it again, it's gonna be basically the same package we had last year. Same kind of commercials, same kind of name branding, on-field name branding. All the mentions in the ESPN Sports Center building up to it. I'm sure when they start mentioning it now, which it will be, depending on what we do, whether we do it or not, it'll be out there again. And we're looking forward, if it goes forward, to be another successful year. Again, we've been marketing before, Cub games. Now we're looking at national exposure, and this is a one-year option that we'd have before us. So, before I call any votes, I'd like to, first, I'll go through the trustees, if they have any comments, questions, concerns they have, or whatever. So, trustee Prochnow?
I have no concerns or comments.
Okay. Trustee Frankie?
Yes. Well, as the board knows, I've been back and forth on this a few times. We've discussed different reasons for this, and I first want to like to thank the mayor. I gave him a couple, not tests, but things that I would like him, or liked him to look at. And he did come back and solve these problems that I had, so I do appreciate that. I, I'm hoping that we continue on with the, get the bang for the buck that we did the last year. I don't think we will, but I still think it's probably going to be worth us to do this for one more year. So, I think that as long as we hold to what we discussed, I think it will be successful. I want it to be, obviously, it works for the village, so I'm going to vote yes for this.
Trustee Feiter.
I want to say that I have some of the same questions I think trustee Frankie had, and these have been answered. But I also feel that realistically, we're not going to have as much publicity and as much of the, as many of the people across the country talking about us we did the last time. At least, I don't think so. It'd be nice if we did. But I still think it's worth giving it a shot again. It seemed to really do well for the people of Elk Grove. They seem to take so much pride in us having this bowl and doing this. And by the turnout at Real Time with all the people that came there and were cheering during the commercials of the football game, they weren't watching the football game that much, but they like looking at the Elk Grove commercials. And that really impressed me. So I thought that was a really nice thing. So, yeah, I think this is something we should give a shot to again and do.
Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was well said, Pat. I would just add that we've been visiting businesses, and not all of them have been that excited about the bowl game, but we have, I've heard several that have been excited about it. And we'd like to continue to keep the business park full. And also, to get new businesses, it would be nice to get them from outside the country or from other states and not taking them from our neighbors, like, well, I won't mention our favorite suburb, but even Chicago. It doesn't do our state any good to be taking them from other towns and just moving them around. So I think we're on the right track, and I think another try at this is the way to go, so you have my support, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Zarnik.
Trustee Listener said a lot of what I feel. The key that we got with that first advertising, of course, was the unusual aspect that a village was not tourism-bound to do something like this. But what we have seen, the inquiries and the hits that we're getting from regional and national, or more than regional, more, some national, it's something that you have to continue to make sure that our name is out there. So I do feel that that is something that we should try again and see what response we get now, future, and, you know, make sure that that name-brand Elk Grove is there, exceptional. Thank you.
Trustee Petri.
Yes, I agree, and I think, I find more and more people know who and what Elk Grove is. And I think that bowl game really put us, put us out there, that people recognize it, and I think we should go again.
Before we call the vote, as people know, I'm not running for office this time. So like I mentioned, I'm out, you know, knocking on doors, helping people. I tell people three things people talk about when I knock on the doors. First one, they're happy we don't have vehicle stickers anymore. Second one, they talk about the summer concerts. And believe it or not, the third one, they talk about that bowl game. It's amazing how many people remember it, know it. And some people, you know, I always have to say, me talking, probably about 80, 20 like the idea, like the recognition for the village, like how we're nationally known, the positive, because it was a positive story. It was not a negative story. It was positive. So, you know, that was good. They pick up on it, they saw that and all that. But again, as was said earlier by trustees, people took a lot of pride in Elk Grove. They're proud to see Elk Grove out there, proud to see their name, proud to see people talking about it. And again, in a positive light. It was not like there was a mass shooting at Elk Grove High School, or there is some huge giant drug lord taken down. I mean, this is a positive story about our community, positive story about our business park, and where we're trying to bring it out to the world to see and hopefully be part of. And that's the goal behind this. It really is. And, you know, and it's funny because people say, well, you know, some people are upset about it. I said, but you know what's good about it is? They're talking about it. And that's what we want. People talking about Makers Wanted Elk Grove, Makers Wanted Elk Grove. That's all you want in marketing. You want your name out there. And that is what we've been trying to achieve, and I think we've been doing a good job. And you're right, it's going to be interesting to see the results this year. We all know, we're realistic. I'm saying to the press right now, the numbers won't be what they were last year. If they were, first off, we wouldn't be paying $300,000. Secondly, there'd probably be 50 towns lined up trying to get that game because that was an unbelievable return on the investment. But with that said, Lori, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Petri?
Aye.
Trustee Procton?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Well, you know, it'd help if I had a motion and a second according to Mr. Romo here. So without-
That was practice, that was practice.
Without that, I just want to see if we had the votes before I called it. Now let me know we're okay. I'll call the votes now.
I'm not doing it twice.
Could I, could I have a motion? Second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Listener, trustee Zarnik, not mine, says trustee Petri, one of his last big things he does, we'll give him the second. Lori, can you please call the roll again?
Absolutely. Trustee Frankie?
Yeah, okay.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Petri?
Yes.
Trustee Procton?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Yeah, we always do the practice vote, just to make sure we got the votes. So with that said, the motion passes six to nothing. We move on now to, let's see, that finishes the regular agenda. We move on now to Plan Commission or Zoning Board, nothing, Mr. Romo?
Nothing under either commission.
Boy, that's one of the few times I've ever seen actually nothing listed, too. So very good. Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Yes, we have seven $1,000 scholarships, as long as you don't steal it for the Bahamas Bowl. And, yep, we'll be giving them away in end of May. If you will just go to our website and pull out the applications, it'll explain everything you need to do. And I'm pretty sure people are bored of me saying this every week, but make sure you get them in by the beginning of May because we will follow the May 3 cutoff date. So get them in early. And like I said, $7,000 given away.
Good. That helped because of Microphone Brewing.
And you know what? You're right. I should say that every time. We've got an extra $3,000 worth of scholarships for at least the next five years because of the fundraiser from Microphone. So thank you again, Microphone Brewing.
Very good. Zoning Board, I mean, I'm sorry, Business Leaders Forum, trustee Petri.
You have anything?
Yeah, just a couple things. Thank you. Tomorrow, we're visiting Performance Lighting. It's a very interesting company. I just got a chance to peek at their website, and they do, done lighting for a lot of big stars. I was surprised. I didn't know about them. And let's see, on the 20th, we had a master class at Enclave. And unfortunately, the speaker was stuck in Ohio because the weather was pretty bad that day. So Dr. Morrison and John Dallas put on a presentation last minute, and I thought it was very interesting. And even more interesting, I thought, was, it had to be at least six students from Harper in the class. So the, the working together of all these different groups, the colleges, the high schools, and Enclave is coming together, and maybe we'll get that help we need, and even more businesses starting with these young entrepreneurs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
The Franchise Meeting was canceled because of weather. Ray, have we heard of a follow-up date yet?
Nothing's been scheduled as of yet.
Okay. So we don't know on the date on that. I would like to mention one other thing on the previous report, Mr. Mayor. On the 26th of March, John Dallas or someone from Enclave is going to be doing a presentation, because we've been talking about it quite a bit over the year. And maybe, John did do a presentation about a year or so ago, but maybe a refresher might be good to hear what he's been doing and what Enclave's been doing and how it's tying in. Because we have had an arrangement with Enclave, one of these business, private partnerships, and I think it's, it's going to be positive. So that's for the 26th, right? Correct, Mr. Romo?
Yes, sir, that was the-
There'll be a committee in the whole, by the way, if everyone agrees. And that concludes. That concludes.
Thank you. We move on. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik?
I'll report.
Move on. Information Committee, trustee Listener.
I'll report.
I gave it all.
Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
We are still collecting Christmas lights until the end of March, so if you are taking them down, I know the weather's been terrible. Probably a lot of people delayed doing it. You can still, if you want to dispose of them and get them recycled, do the right thing with them. Bring them over here to the Village Hall, and you can do that. And that concludes my report.
We move on. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik, on this beautiful summer-like night.
And we're going to have a wonderful parade September 21st in conjunction with Oktoberfest, and it kicks off at 2:00 p.m. And I can't remember when our next parade meeting is. I think it's April 1st. So 5:30 p.m., lower level.
April Fools Day?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Procton.
No report.
Do you want to put that item?
Until I have a meeting date, I'll, I'll hold on.
But you want to have the item listed on the holding on the-
Oh, yes, could you please do that?
Yeah. So we're going to place on, under the JHPZ Committee, parking regulations in the industrial park as an item. Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Airport update. We had a good, JDA did a great presentation from the ONCC. They are now working on a rotation plan. They'll be brought to SOT communities in the next few weeks, and then hopefully brought to the ONCC in April. And hopefully that'd be the rotation plan that can be adopted when the new runway is done. I'm starting early, I'm going to keep saying it, we're going to have some impact. When they finish those new northern runways, lengthen the one and build a new one. There's going to be more flights over Elk Grove, just what we always predicted with the expansion. So we are working hard with our neighbors and Chicago to minimize the impact as much as possible. But again, we only have stay at the fly-quiet overnight hours of about 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. This is not daytime, early evening at all. So just so know. Our hope is if the plan works well, they expand into it. Right now, that's the time we're looking at. Because the nighttime flight numbers are going up dramatically, and we've been noticing that. As they can fit more in there, they do. So we're going to work hard, we're going to stay on top of as best we can to protect that. Now, since you're cheating on the names of schools, do you remember all the concerts? Or you need cheat notes for that, too?
Maybe. Melissa Etheridge.
What date?
July 4th.
Very good.
Something like that.
Next one is?
Boss Gags.
Next one?
Commodores.
Next one?
Is that Winona and the big, big noise.
Noise, very good. And we wrap it up with?
Night Ranger.
Very good, Georgie. And no cheat notes either.
There was no cheating.
Wow, okay.
No studying either.
Very good. Special events, now it's only a little over two months away.
Memorial Day.
That'll be coming up soon, inside. So rain, shine, hot, cold, that would be comfortable. A report from Village, oh no, there's no liquor commission report tonight. Report from Village Manager?
No report this evening.
And report from our Village Clerk, you do have one.
That's a small one. Just a reminder, early voting will begin March 18th through April 1st here at the Village Hall. Hours are posted on the website. Feel free to contact the Village Clerk's office if you have any questions.
Okay. Under the Village Attorney, as usual, nothing. So it's all clear? No new, is there a new business item from trustees tonight?
No.
Mr. Petzo, how's everything going?
Excellent.
That's what we like to hear, my friend. Anybody wish to adjourn the board tonight? Open comment time? Nothing? Mr. Shavel, things going good?
Excellent.
Okay. Without objection, we'll go ahead and ask for motion to, oh, by the way, it looks like Lori Lightfoot and Tony Preckwinkle will be in a runoff for-
Really?
Wow.
Yep. Daley's going to finish in third, close behind Preckwinkle.
That's what I've seen, too.
But Lori Lightfoot.
Yeah.
I always thought Preckwinkle, but I didn't think Lightfoot would be second or third, so.
All the money Daley spent.
Yeah, he had the most. Money doesn't buy everything, so.
Where's Gary Chico?
He's way down.
Really?
He's like eighth or ninth.
Who's that?
Gary Chico.
Yeah.
So with that, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie. Lori, call the roll, please.
Trustee Listener?
Yes.
Trustee Petri?
Aye.
Trustee Procton?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Yes.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, passes six to nothing. Folks, have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.